Everybody shut your mics, please.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's call the meeting to order and without standing, cause it take everybody off the screen. Let's begin with pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Any support? I believe Scott supported that. Uh, may I have a roll call on, uh, this, uh, approval?
Uh, Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos? Oh, we don't have Steve.
He's, I think he's still trying to connect.
Okay, uh, Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Mermel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weidman?
Yes.
Okay, now onto the communication update, Mark. Yes, uh, Marion?
Yes, I just kind of wanna, uh, do a little bit of a preamble is this is the first time we have ever done anything like this.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, uh, with all, uh, due respect to the board, I just wanna be sure that you understand as well as the folk in the audience, Julie.
Uh, I just received a message from Mr. Drakos that says the host will let him in soon.
Well, I let him in, he might be in the wrong. Would you check and see? It says his name here. So he's, should be in.
He's not up on, uh, the screen I have.
He's what?
He's not on the screen I have.
He's not on mine either.
He's on mine. Well, let me go through this and then I'll see if I can figure that out. Um, just a little bit of, uh, directions that if you wanna speak, you raise your hand, that helps. Uh, we will be doing for all action items at the end of the meeting. Oh, just what Mr. Weidman just did now, which will be a roll call vote. Um, if something said and you kind of agree, if not a formal vote, do a thumbs up. Or at the bottom of your screen, there's something called reactions and you can do a thumbs up right there. Or if you like something someone says, you could applaud. So that's kinda cool. Those are the two options there. Um, and again, this is the first time that we've ever done this. So, uh, bear with us because I'm sure we're going to have to use this as we move on through, uh, the next few months. So with that, Mr. Weidman, it's all yours.
All right, thank you. All right, on to Mark.
Thank you. Uh, basically since, obviously, we've been trying to work through in the communications. With me and the superintendent, we've been trying to work through all of the options and all of the different circumstances that we are dealing with, the technology, with communication. And we've been adjusting very well to those different things. Uh, we've been trying to inform the community on a very regular basis about the things that are happening in terms of food distribution. Working with Mr. Fitzgerald and Marla Ernst, who is our food service coordinator to try to get that distribution out. As we go forward, we've been sharing stuff on social media and as necessary, which at this point, it's usually once a week, we're give, we're sending the community and the board members and staff and parents on email with highlighting the major topics of the week that remain pertinent to the schools. We have a coronavirus page as well that we've created on the website. There's a orange banner at the top of every page on our website that informs about with a link to that page of, there's some different documents there. And we're, we've also communicated, I worked with Mrs. Mercer at the beginning of this week to launch the learning plan, which, home learning plan, which she'll talk about more in her report. Uh, but everything is available and we have the communications at L O K one-two dot org email address, which is I'm monitoring regularly and we're responding to those emails as they are appropriate based on the different topics. So people have written in about many different things from the community, parents, et cetera. And we've been trying to communicate with them. I've also been with Mrs. Genopoulos on the Orion Township COVID group, um, leaders from the community and communicating with them about what we're doing and supporting her in that area. So that's about what's going on with communication.
Very great, thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? All right, seeing none, no raised hands, uh, we'll go on to public part, yes, Nate.
Yeah, hey, thanks, Mark. Um, I know there's a lot of awesome work that's being done. The work of Marla and the food service people is like, it's next level when we think of just the fundamental human need at keeping people fed uh, on that. Is there anything that as a board we might do to further recognize or, or show appreciation? Um, I don't know what that might be, uh, but there's tons of outstanding stuff, but i- if we really look at that basic human need and the way that team has stepped up, it's, it's really incredible. Is there anything more besides acknowledging that we, we might challenge ourselves to think or, um, cabinet, is there something that might be meaningful to that group? That, that we could do for them or, or in order to acknowledge them?
Any thoughts? I, I would agree with Nate that.
And we.
It's an incredible job, just.
We could dedicate a meeting to them, but I don't know what that would do for recognition.
I would, uh, John?
Yeah.
Also throw a large piece of the transportation group in there too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
What we can do, moving forward, I can talk to cabinet about what they think is appropriate way to recognize them, whether it's something publicly. And we can try to work on that in terms of a philosophy or some type of recognition that we can give them at some point. Cool.
I think, I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to public participation. I believe we have one item in public participation.
I am in receipt of one email on the LO board account. It is from Jeff Faber, who's, uh, you all know, he's our LOEA president, and it says, "Dear school board members and district administrators, I would like to sincerely thank you for your steady guidance during these unprecedented times. Your flexibility, unwavering support and confidence in our staff has been apparent from the start and is very much appreciated as we navigate these uncharted waters together. We have an amazing collection of people that make up Lake Orion Community Schools, and I am thankful for the collaborative leaders of this district to help build this strong foundation in weather and any storm." Jeff Faber, LOEA president.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you to Jeff for his kind words and, uh, we'll move on to strategic area discussion items and governance and, uh, Marion?
Okay, um, I'm gonna do my two things on the agenda in reverse order, if that's all right, cause one's real simple. And then virtual board meeting schedule, um, once we get this down pat, I would like to, uh, get a thumbs up or a thumbs down from the board. It's really not a vote. Uh, my recommendation is that we keep our established board meeting schedule for the year. They'll be done virtually and then if we have to cancel one or, uh, add something, we can do that later on. But we do have a published and approved board agenda or a board schedule, board meeting schedule. So, uh, if you're all in agreement, so Julie. Look at Burgat, she did her little thumb. Anybody against it? Thumbs down? Okay, we'll just, we'll just plan on that, Julie.
Great.
Then the other one, which is really kind of a biggie, um, I'm gonna speak to some of it. Heidi's gonna speak to some of it as well. I think the big question, and Rick too, and John, but, um, the big issue is what is the impact of the, uh, most recent and, and, uh, not changed yet, order from the governor? Uh, her executive order, what the impact of that is on us? Uh, this is kind of not new news, it's old news. And that is that we will not be going back to a school building for instruction before the end of the school year. So it's pretty clear in her order that no instruction will take place in, uh, face-to-face manner in a building. The other part of that same, um, uh, paragraph is that, um, you can't really go into the buildings unless the order for stay-at-home is lifted. So we're still abiding by that. We, you know, that's really strong. There are a number of employee issues in there. Uh, Rick, I don't know if, uh, you would be willing to speak to any of those?
Do you want me to do that now? I had planned on doing that during my update, but I can do that now if you'd like.
Do it now, yeah. Let's stay with the order and see how that impacts everything.
Well, obviously with the executive order of last Thursday, um, and the length of that executive order being seventeen pages, there's a, a lot to dive into. Um, and as Marion alluded to, a good portion of that is in relationship to, uh, actual employment of, uh, our employees and compensation and so forth. Um, the first order of business, uh, in the executive order was, uh, that we continue to pay employees. It did not go on to define what employee meant. So we've worked with our legal counsel, also gotten, uh, information from other legal councils as well as sat in on a, uh, a conference call with M A S A and the state superintendent to truly get a handle on what the definition of employee is. At this point, all indications are that is anyone who was currently employed by the district. One of the dilemmas, I think that it'd be important for you to be aware of as a board, um, there's, there's an issue based on, uh, paying employees and the revenue sources associated with those employees. For instance, we have two major groups that are of supporting, and that's food service and our, uh, childcare programs. We do not fund those through the K twelve, um, dollars that we receive through the state, but they are, uh, they're self-sustaining, so they have a revenue source. Well, with us not operating those programs, we're not receiving the revenue to keep them afloat. So we've really been trying to work with, uh, trying to figure out how to maneuver that. Quite frankly, there was actually some pro, uh, some uh, prohibitive portions of state aid on what we can spend that on. And we can't, uh, expend K twelve dollars on early childhood. Well, that, that one's a little iffy, John can speak that later, but like food service and so forth. So trying to figure out how do you continue to pay employees in, uh, relationship to the executive order out of funds that you don't receive. So we're working through that. Um, the, uh, the order does allow us to, what, as it stated, to redeploy employees to meaningful work to support the plan. So we're in the process of working on that and back to Nate's comments earlier regarding food service. We have a core group of food service and transportation, uh, individuals who have done a fantastic job. But we're finding that, uh, recently, that number of people willing to do it is, is dwindling. And we have people who are on the payroll, who are receiving pay, um, but who are not equally participating in some of the work functions. So at the conclusion of this meeting, um, in conjunction with our legal counsel and cabinet, uh, we have, uh, crafted a letter that we will be sending to all employees. Um, that letter does indicate that, uh, in accordance with the executive order at this time, uh, they will continue to be paid. But we do have, um, core functions that need to continue and they will need to continue throughout the school year. In order to do so, we'll require employees to work, uh, at certain times. So we're directing them to make themselves available. And we'll put a plan together that will be equitable for all. Um, you know, there's some options that, uh, John and I have talked about with some areas that we're, we're lacking in that we could redeploy some of those people to do some meaningful work. Um, a lot of it will have to do with when the stay-home order is lifted. Um, right now, we can, uh, we'll, we'll issue, uh, legal councils working with us on issuing a letter that people could actually have with them in the event that they needed it to prove that they were on their way to perform an essential function for the school district like food service and so forth. So we're working with legal counsel on that as well. There's some, outside of the executive order, there was also a change to the Family Medical Leave Act, which now is called the Emergency Fat, Family Medical Leave Act Extension. And that, um, that complicates matters a little bit as well. Uh, it extends some of the FMLA benefits. There are some requirements as to how you can qualify. Uh, it is directly related to a COVID nineteen issue. So we're working, uh, once again to, you know, maneuver our way through all of that minutia and figure out exactly what that means for us and how that could impact um, our requirements on individuals to come in and perform some of those duties to, to support the plan. Um, and that plan being the continuation of feeding children and the continuation of educating children. Um, so a lot to come in that regard. Um, the, uh, executive order also suspended evaluations for the year. Um, so it, it suspended the law requiring evaluations. Um, and we, uh, will, uh, uh, honor that and move forward with that. We're not sure, a lot of folks are gonna wonder what their effectiveness rating is for the year. And once again, we're required by law to attach an effectiveness rating to all certified staff. We haven't gotten guidance on that yet, so we don't know the answer to that one. Um, the executive order also did allow for districts to explore a balanced calendar. And, um, even as soon as this year, um, I would just caution the board to, to understand that um, calendar is a negotiated item. So we do have a calendar for this year and for next year, which we've already negotiated with, um, our LOEA. Um, so in order for us to even consider a balanced calendar, first, we would have to go back to the union groups and, and sit down and negotiate. When we, uh, negotiated next year's calendars, calendar, one of the things that we did do at that time was take into consideration the bond projects. And if we went to a pre-Labor Day start, like some districts are doing, many districts at this point. And as you recall, we do have a waiver that allows us to do so. Um, we opted not to do that because we didn't wanna shorten the construction window for the summer for all of the bond projects, especially at places like Carpenter and Weber. So um, I think a lot would have to do with when the current, um, restrictions on construction and so forth take place. Uh, that would possibly allow us to, um, jump on some of those bond projects sooner than later. But from a feasibility standpoint, I don't see, and I, I believe, uh, um, Heidi's on board with this, uh, as well from, uh, um, the bond project perspective. I don't know that we could do a balanced calendar for this year or even a pre-Labor Day start for next year. Um, but that's something obviously that could be up for discussion. Um, we are working with legal counsel on an employee screening, which was part of the executive order. Uh, we've been doing some of that with our food service up to, uh, this point. But, uh, I just feel more confident that we get a, an officially drafted document from legal counsel. I had hoped to see that, uh, late yesterday or early today, haven't seen that yet. In other words, anytime someone shows up to distribute food, to work in any capacity, um, it's a checkoff that, uh, goes through all of the symptoms. And, and really it eliminates people who may have, um, some of the symptoms of, uh, the virus or have been recently exposed and so forth as a way to ensure that we're putting our employees' safety first and foremost. Um, let me see on my list here. Uh, I think that's about it. Um, John and I are participating tomorrow in a, uh, a legal update with Lusk Albertson, which is our, um, legal firm that we use for most employee matters. And it's, uh, entitled, uh, uh, basically making sense of the executive order. So we have a, a three-hour, um, webinar with them tomorrow, going through each of the, uh, different sections of the executive order to ensure that we're, we're within the guidelines and, and anytime there's legislative changes and/or executive orders, those things come out and then it's a rush to really try to fully understand what does it say? What was the intent? What's the purpose? And how do you move forward within those parameters? And the last four to five days, that's really what's happened. Um, every legal counsel, uh, firm out there that works in public education is, is scrambling to put, make sense of all of this. And, uh, so we're not alone in this. We're, we're truly, I think, uh, a little bit ahead of the game. Um, but there will still be a lot of work to do to make sure that we're honoring what was in that seventeen-page executive order.
Well, let me, yeah, thank you, Rick, very much covering the employee issues. There are a few other things that I wanted to highlight that do have an impact.
Excuse me, Marion?
Yes.
Before, before you move on with that, uh, I just wanted to see if there were any questions, although I have some questions. I'm gonna reserve my questions until after their, uh, legal webinar because I'm sure that they'll talk about, uh, interpretations of the orders, but, uh, are there any others who have questions for Rick before we move on? Yes, Nate?
Thanks, Rick. I don't have, um, the contract language. I'm not super sharp on it. When you say, uh, calendar is negotiated, is it the number of days or is it actual start and end dates that are negotiated?
Um, it's, number of days are set by the state. So you have to have a minimum number of days and a minimum number, number of hours of instruction. Um, and technically, we're supposed to abide by a five-year county calendar for the common breaks that around the, uh, the winter holiday or Christmas holiday, whatever you wanna consider it. And, and the spring break issue, um, unfortunately, our county's not been real good at sticking to that, as many of you may know. Um, there was a split this last year and, and districts didn't abide by the common calendar. Um, and then start date officially, unless you have a waiver, you could not start prior to Labor Day. So start date, um, there was some parameters within it, but anything after Labor Day was negotiated. So it's mainly negotiating when breaks are, um, length of year, whether there's a mid-winter break or not, those types of things.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for Rick? Okay, back to Marion.
Um, Steve, can you hear us? Nod your head. Steve? Perfect. Okay, welcome, Steve. Sorry for the confusion. I just wanna add a few other, highlight a few other things. Some of will be added in Heidi's report. But, um, right now, the, uh, required number of hours and days that we have always been held due in the School Aid Act or the State Aid Act, um, that has been suspended. Uh, there's a number of forgiven days right now. I believe it's at nineteen, but I'm sure that that will change. Uh, the big issue is that we have to submit a plan. The big issue is that we have to submit a plan to be approved. And the plan is pretty comprehensive. Tomorrow, Heidi and Carrie and I will be working on that plan. And we must fill that in. That has to be approved. It first goes to Oakland Schools, your intermediate school district. We have a template that we are completing that asks for very specific information. And then what happens after that is if the ISD approves it, then what happens is it is submitted to the state. But if the ISD approves it, the state will just automatically accept the approval of the ISD. They're not gonna go through five hundred and some applications. I can assure you of that. So we're really confident based on what the template requires to fill in. We're very confident in what we will be completing in the application, that ours will be easily approved. We'll probably have a lot more than is required, but that's, that's really the key to the whole thing. If you're interested in seeing the order in its entirety, I will be happy to send you the link. And the impact. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Questions? Jake?
I'll unmute you. There you go.
Yeah, Marion, in the packet, there was, we added something about the number of credits that seniors needed. I don't know if this is the point where we're gonna talk about that. Just wanted to have you address because there's a lot of confusion in the community amongst the seniors, because there are things in the student handbook that the board has approved. For example, that calls out that they need, you know, certain number of credit in each department. And they need to take certain courses like a math class in their senior year. So is there anything else we as a board need to do to ensure that seniors can graduate?
Heidi, do you want to answer that? I can do it or you can do it. If I unmute you. Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah. Okay. I think, I think a lot of that will be answered during my report. I'm gonna go through a whole.
You good with that, Jake?
Yep, that's fine.
All right, sounds good.
And thank you, Jake, because you did give us a little bit of a heads up on that, but I figured that Heidi would be the better one to answer that. So thank you. I think the only other thing, that's all on the actual executive order. But I did have a couple of things that I did want to bring to the board's attention. But Julie told me that I'm riffling or riffling my papers. I have to be careful. So I made myself some notes. Okay, I just wanted you to know that all of us, meaning Cabinet and Mark, have been involved in a number of meetings, as you can well imagine, over the last few weeks. Specifically, we've been having a cabinet meeting and Mark has been part of that. And we have been doing that usually twice a day. Every morning and usually we touch base every afternoon and that's been really helpful for us to make sure that we're all addressing the issues that need to be addressed. From my standpoint, the Oakland County Superintendents have been meeting and are going to be meeting twice a week with our intermediate, or our all of the superintendents and Oakland Schools officials. The Superintendent's Association at the state, I think I may have mentioned to you, we have been meeting. Actually, we had a huge meeting of all five hundred superintendents in the state that also included the governor. So that was very helpful. At a federal level, Alyssa Slotkin, who is a rep, she has been convening, really they're more like question and answer town halls. I've been a part of that. As an aside, one of her aides did contact us and asked us if we had excess supplies to donate. So John and Wes gathered up all of the extra supplies. John might talk a little bit about what those were when it's his turn. But, and we donated all of those to one of the hospitals in the area. So I feel really good that we are contributing everything that we can possibly for this, this awful virus. We, let's see, town halls with various groups. Senator Shirkey is going to have one this week coming up. We actually had a fun leadership meeting online yesterday, all of our administrators in the district. We were able to convene a really nice administrative meeting so that we were all really connecting and making sure. Heidi has a ton of those meetings with groups of administrators, but this was our first opportunity to have everybody together. And then finally, Mark and I and Burgett are on a township meeting that occurs once a week with Chris Barnett and various stakeholders in the community from the religious affiliations, different organizations such as the NOCC and others. And so we have been part of that as well, which is nice because it allows us to inform these various stakeholders of the kinds of things that we're doing in the schools. So they kind of spread the word. I don't know if Mark or Burgett want to add to that? Is that a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
You good?
We're good. So those are all the meetings, but I just wanted you to know that, that most of us on Cabinet, including Mark and Julie, we're doing a six in the morning till God only knows when at night. So despite the fact that we can't leave our homes, we've been very busy. As are many, many, many other superintendents in school districts. So that ends my report unless you have questions.
All right, questions for Marion? Lot of stuff there. All right, I'm sure we'll hear more detail as the meeting goes on as well. Moving on to the Policy Committee Report. No report. Thank you. I like that. I like it. Board Self-Assessment Committee Report.
Board Self-Assessment Committee has nothing new to report today, but I will be asking Julie sometime later in this month to pull up our assessment tool and provide that with our committee to see if we need a meeting prior to launching that.
Great. Thank you, Burgett. Okay, moving to Student Achievement to Heidi.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda is, if you remember a few weeks back, we did have a presentation regarding micro and macro economics instructional text. And so I'll be asking for your approval later on the agenda for that. Next, I'm going to attempt to share my screen, which I don't know if this doesn't work, Marion, because you're the host. I did send this to you. So we'll see what happens.
Marion, you're muted.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I'm gonna be able to do that.
Wait a second. I think I can, multiple participants can share simultaneously. So let's try it. Try that. Is anything showing?
Heidi, we can see your email screen.
Your emails are on. Okay. Yep, that's good. Okay, can you see that?
Yeah, we see your calls order.
Perfect.
Do we have to pay?
Yes, my curtains have been delivered.
Your email.
It's on my screen. Hey, hold on.
Exit out and see what happens.
I think it's because you got two monitors. We're seeing one monitor. You're seeing the other.
Hey, hold on.
Hey, trying dragging that second monitor image over to your first one.
Now?
Yep.
There we go.
You see academic plan?
Yes, we do.
Perfect. Okay, so this first document here is where we've been and where we are going. So during the first week of all of this, we had teachers that were asked to connect with students for social emotional reasons. This is also the week that we launched the Home Learning Resource Padlet on the website. In addition to that, we got our mindfulness sessions up and running by Stephanie Harris. Each week, and Mark is helping her with this. She is conducting three sessions of mindfulness, each targeted to a particular age group. So there's one specifically for adults, one's for teens, and one is for elementary aged students. And then we also implemented instructional coaches' hours so that we could help our teachers get ready for the upcoming weeks of when we would be planning for our academic. The next week there, March thirtieth through April third, was spring break. And then this week, we kicked off the next phase of our academic plan. So teachers across the district, each worked on teacher-specified lessons and activities. And in addition to this, the K, there was a template that was developed at the elementary and middle school level. So for instance, all of first grade, the activities that went out to the students, all were the same. And that template was then sent by individual elementary teachers, so that again, there was that connection to their very own students. And then Mark also posted that template for each grade level on the website, so that parents could reference it quickly if they needed it and wouldn't have to dig in their email. Couple reasons why we went with the template for K eight. One, to make sure it was easy for parents and students to quickly be able to reference all of their classes at once. In addition to this, we did implement a calendar where planning took place across the district. So for instance, in our K five, elementary, we went by building. So the first building up was Stadium. They did all of the planning for K five in collaboration with the other buildings, but they were that building was responsible for really getting the template filled out. And then for six, eight, we did by building as well. And the reason that we did this was, one, as I said, to make it easier, but two, to ensure that if a student, a first grade student at Blanch Sims wanted to work with another first grade student, say, at Stadium Drive, they'd be working on the same activities and they could help one another. We've already heard from parents that this has been something that has been very positive. And parents have really liked the idea of knowing that all first graders in the district are working or have been given the same activities. That is the same way with six through eight as well. The other reason is we wanted to ensure that if our teachers, you know, became ill or had to take care of their families, that we built in a foundation there that we would be able to ensure that our students are still getting their activities. So that has, that has really worked out well. Our high school, individual teachers have been emailing their classes with their activities. And so that has been more individualized to the particular classes that students are taking at the high school. Special education has also obviously been built into this plan. They've received general education plans and then those students that have particular programs that are specific to them. Ancillary staff and those teachers have been working with those families directly. So that plan that we are on now, we started it Monday, that plan will carry out through April seventeenth. In the midst of all of this is when the governor called off for the, for the remainder of the year. And now we are developing the next phase of our plan that will include all of the requirements in the governor's executive plan. So we have our next steps here, which we are, have been working on. We're working on finalizing our academic plan, as I said, to meet the executive order. That plan, as Marion spoke to earlier, will be submitted by the end of this week. We're working on it all day tomorrow. The plan will start implementation for our community on April twentieth. In addition to all of this, Craig Scone has been working to develop a staff training and protocol for using platforms such as Zoom to incorporate into our April twentieth phase of academic plan, should teachers wish to video conference with their students. I really want to take a minute to address this. I don't want to say issue, but honestly, it has become an issue of Zoom and other video conferencing platforms. We have had teachers that have been using these types of platforms as well as all across the state and nation. And there have been several incidents where frankly, teachers and students, you know, safety, I would say, has not been put at the forefront. And so we want to make sure that we are not putting any of our students or our teachers at risk. And so I will let you know that our staff has been asked at this point in time to please hold off on video conferencing until we can come out with the protocol and training in order to protect our students and our teachers. And so, as I said, Craig has been working on that. Our staff has been notified. Those protocols and trainings will go out to staff by Friday this week. And if staff choose to, they may implement video conferencing on April twentieth. We will only be using two platforms in the district. Zoom at the elementary level and Microsoft Teams at the secondary level. The reason for choosing these two platforms is one, to make sure that we as a district can become masters of these two platforms and ensure, as I said, the safety of our students and of our staff. And so as I realize, there are many hundreds of platforms out there. However, the district will be only using those two at this time in order, as I said, to make sure that everybody is protected. Anything more regarding that? I don't, I don't think so. But there have been questions regarding that. In addition, at the elementary level, for Zoom, we will be also putting in a protocol for parents that will be asking them to use as well. Because we want to make sure that all students are protected within the class. We, we've really had instances where we had pictures being taken of the class. Students' pictures being put on other social media with names. And so those are types of things that we do not promote. And so we really want to make sure that we have some guidelines in place.
I just want to jump in here on your Zoom safety. It's interesting because Zoom itself has come up with a couple of protocols now themselves, recognizing that there have been so many issues, one being that you have to have a password. In the past, you did not have to have a password. You'll notice that today, at the meeting, I had to admit you, which is really another protection. So that you're only admitting people who you've invited and you don't have someone jumping in, although hackers can probably hack. But the main thing is that you have to have a password to get in. Thank you, Heidi.
Okay. Also, we are working with our counselors, family school coordinators, social workers, and behaviorists. They are working, soon they will be launching a counseling and emotional support services for our students. And so information will be coming out real soon regarding that. Mark has been working with those staff members to design some flyers and some information so that we could support families in that way as well. In addition to that, Michelle Kuratin is working on a plan for NHS students to provide tutoring for our students. Again, that is something that is a work in progress because we need to figure out exactly how we're going to do that via video conferencing, email, et cetera. But that is something that we are looking to implement for our students. Regarding technology, we did conduct a student survey for the need for technology devices. We have had several distributions of technology. You can see the dates there. We've had three of those. We are really trying to prioritize our technological needs to ensure that we are meeting the needs as much as we possibly can for our families throughout the district. And so that continues honestly to be a work in progress. And so we're continuing to work on that. And we have a list that have filled out the survey and who have, we also have parents that have directly contacted teachers or myself or principals. And we've been reaching out to them and we have a list that we're working down on, again, prioritizing the need. We're also working on getting hotspots to provide Wi-Fi to those who do not have it. This has been a little bit of an issue because hotspots are hard to come by right now. We have them ordered, but everybody is ordering them. And so we are waiting to receive them. Technology is also working on extending our Wi-Fi to parking lots via access points so that once the shelter in place is lifted, that we may be able to use our parking lots as well where students can get access to Wi-Fi if they do not have it. Okay. A few items that have been suspended that you probably have already heard for sure. State testing along with the third grade retention law. So those are things that we do not necessarily need to worry about now. Things down the road that we are considering, once we get beyond this next phase of our academic plan that we intend to start on April twentieth, we will then start looking at what are our options for our students for summer? Are we able to provide anything regarding our summer, in our summer months? And so we do have that on our list and we will be taking that into consideration. Certainly scheduling for the fall, adjusting all of our curriculum maps that will need to be, you know, implemented in the fall. And then looking at our professional development plan for the fall. This will be something that will be changing. As you know, in the past, we have had quite a few teacher labs throughout the year and that's how, one way, we provide our professional development. Next year, we'll be looking at getting creative, keeping teachers in the classroom as much as possible due to this shutdown. So those are some things that we are keeping on our list to consider. And then I included, obviously, and I know that Marion sent this to you, all of our resources right now that are on the website. Okay, so now I'm going to move to the highlights of our... Stop sharing. There we go. Highlights of the plan that we are developing for our next phase are April twentieth phase. At this point in time, I do want you to know that this continues to be a work in progress. You have to remember that we have three levels that we are trying to accommodate. We have elementary, middle, and high school. Right now, I'm going to give you highlights regarding the high school. The middle school are somewhat similar and elementary is obviously much simpler. I think for today, if I provide you highlight for the high school, that is the one that is the most extensive and the one that we, you know, is taking the most time. And so, again, I think a few things to point out. This next phase of the plan will not start until April twentieth because, again, we have to fill out the template for the executive order and get approval. So this next phase will start April twentieth. So we are looking at, once we start at the high school, April twentieth through May twenty ninth, we have a little bit of a unique situation in Lake Orion with our block and our skinny classes. As you know, sometimes this is a benefit and sometimes it's a little bit more challenging depending upon the situation. In this particular situation, we get a little bit of both. It's somewhat of a benefit and somewhat of a challenge. For our block classes, for term three, block classes, remember, are classes that are ninety minutes and they cover more material. For term three, we will begin covering new material in those block classes. We are looking to finish the block classes in term three for students who currently are registered in block classes. I will point out that the material that will be covered, we will be keeping track of students that do participate in the assignments. However, the material will not adversely affect student grades. They will only be used to benefit student grades. We're looking that this material, we will be sure to pick out the important parts in the curriculum so that we can better prepare students for the material that will be covered in the next term of the class if that is applicable. And again, we will be keeping track of this work in Power School like teachers typically would, excluding assignments for grades when necessary. So that is the plan currently for our block classes. So again, teachers will start covering new material, term three material, and will be looking to finish. For our skinnies, these are typically year-long classes. And so we will be looking to cover new term three and term four material. Again, same as before, and a lot of this has to do with the executive order. The material will adversely affect student grades but can be used to benefit students. The material will complete the curriculum in these courses and better prepare students for the material that will be covered in the next course if there is a sequence in the course. I think it's important to point out that in all of this plan, the benefit has always been given to the student because we realize that there will be some students who may be able to participate sometimes and may not be able to participate at times. And so I just want to assure people that this plan has been built with student benefit and interest in mind throughout the entire plan. In regard to third-term classes and specifically speaking to seniors, in this particularly, students will soon receive an email from the high school administration. We are allowing seniors to have an option. This option will consist of students being allowed to either keep the grade that they have currently or selecting a pass/fail. Any makeup work, late work, redo work, we've been trying, teachers at the high school have been trying to really work with students to get that work caught up prior to our shutdown so that those assignments can be included in the term three grade. Students will need to complete all of this work by May twenty ninth so that we can end the term. And that is when they'll also be able to submit their preference for how they want to be graded. Will they take the grade or will they take a pass/fail? If we do not get the form back, then they will receive the letter grade. There are students right now that, let's say we have a particular student, a senior, I'm speaking to seniors right now, that has an A or a B and they're happy with their grade, they can essentially freeze it and be done. That is for seniors. If we have a student that is a senior that wants to improve their grade, then they can certainly do that by doing the assignments that the teachers are sending them. And again, it will be their choice whether they take the letter grade or they take the pass/fail. Students that are still struggling and do have an E, teachers will have specific instructions on how we will be proceeding with those students, taking a look at the students' assessments. Is it just, you know, assessments that they're struggling with? Is it that they haven't completed their homework? So these students that are failing will be looked at individually and will be dealt with individually with their teachers and with their counselors to try to see if we can do anything in order to get them the credit that they need. Any special education students, so students with IEPs, students with 504s, all of the teachers are working together to make sure that those students are accommodated. The other thing that I wanted to point out, and bear with me, I'm trying to give you the highlights, sitting in front of me just for the high school is right now a twelve-page document containing all of the specifics that we are looking at. For our students that have block classes that say, take a math class, for instance, that has typically an A and a B, they have gotten through a portion of that. In the fall, we will be looking to schedule the B part of that class as early in the schedule as possible. This has been something that we have wrestled with for several days. We have come to the realization that there is no possible way for some of our classes to remotely deliver the instruction specifically for, I'm going to say, math and ELA classes are detrimental to really our students' education foundation. And we have really wrestled with, is there any way to go ahead in those block classes and just try to push through fourth term? And we've come to the realization that, no, we cannot. Not, and feel confident for our students' ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade that come fall, the next class in their sequence, they would be ready. You're essentially looking at a whole ten-week, a whole quarter that we would be trying to do remotely that some classes are just so sequential. And so for those particular classes, students will still be given assignments, but each student's schedule will be looked at individually. And for students who have those block classes, where it is the sequence makes a huge difference and matters immensely, their schedule will be essentially hand-on. That's to the point that we're at in the fall to get that second part of that class that they need so that they can move on to the next sequence or double up if necessary. Here's where I think it's important to understand that we need to have flexibility. We are a district that, for many years, has had graduation requirements and for our high school have required thirty credits to graduate and are learning options twenty-eight. We are one of the highest in the state when it comes to graduation requirements and graduation credit. And a lot of that is obviously due to our block schedule. We're able to offer students a lot of opportunity and that's where you get the number of credit that we have. However, because of our block and because of some of these essential classes, I will be asking the board to give us some flexibility within those graduation credits that we will be looking for students in current ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade classes right now that those students could have anywhere from thirty credits to twenty-eight credits and they would still graduate. Again, it really depends upon each individual student and what classes they have taken. And so I will be asking for that flexibility. The other thing I do want the board to know is that all of the Michigan Merit Curriculum that is mandated by the state, there is no problem with us meeting that. And all of our students within those thirty to twenty-eight credits will have the MMC. Those are adjustments that we are not going to make that's required by the state and we easily meet them. The adjustments that we're looking at are what we require students to do locally. And so that's where we'll be looking for flexibility. I can provide you an example of what I mean by flexibility. Not only in the, I think the graduation credits is easy enough to understand when we're basically taking out fourth quarter. That only makes sense, right, that we would have to reduce the credit because we're not moving on for some of our classes in this next fourth quarter. Does everybody understand that, the credit, the credit part?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Heidi, before you go on though, is it possible for you, just to frame for the board a little bit, the how our requirements for credits compares to, let's say, the state average? Just so we can draw some contrast there as to how much more we do versus, let's say, the state average requirement for graduation credits?
I would say typically, what we have been seeing is anywhere from twenty-six, twenty-eight, you know, credits.
So even with a slight reduction, we're still going to be at the higher end of the average?
Yes, and that is because of students being allowed to take these block classes. They can get in many more classes than a traditional schedule. So even with the reduction, yes, that's a great point, Jim, we are still sitting at the top end.
Great, thank you. Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Heidi, if you could clarify for me, I have one question about this credit. This does not impact the current class of twenty twenty?
No. None of this is for the class of twenty. Twenty, the governor has spoke regarding the class of seniors. Essentially, they're done. Unless they want to improve the grade, Lake Orion is certainly going to honor that.
So I just wanted to hear everybody here you say that out loud. Because, you know, there's a lot of talk out there, a lot of speculation from people. And while this has been a difficult crisis that we're all in, people are well-connected and so there's a lot of talk, as you know, in the district about this. And so I think it's so important that people hear this message from you. So thank you for clarifying.
Yes, it has to be clearly understood that seniors are looked at differently in this plan and they're called out specifically. And they're called out specifically in the executive order. So um seniors who are essentially are happy with their grade right now. You're done. Um, they've had enough. They've, they've, right, it's been stressful enough. So we're certainly not going to add to that. The other caveat to that, and we have been beating the drum on this. Lake Orion also has a requirement for service learning hours. In addition, eh um as to our um interviews. We are not modifying that requirement. Students have had four years. It has been an expectation and a requirement in this district for many years that students complete 40 hours of service learning and complete a senior interview. Now, I will tell you, we've been monitoring, again, this very closely. We have a few who still have 40 hours left. Um, and so we are working closely with those students. The other thing that we have done is, I I shouldn't have said we haven't modified, because truly we have. Students who have 35 hours were waiving the five. So they, they are close enough. Um, anything for 35 hours and below. Um, it has been posted on the website. Parents and students have been emailed numerous times. Um, and this has been all throughout the year. We don't wait till the last minute. So this has been, and honestly, not only this year, the past three years. And that's why the modifications are not large. Um, but for those students who have um who still have hours to complete, more than five hours to complete. Um, they have been notified that they need to do an essay, and the essay is um is um prorated, so to speak. So depending upon how many hours you owe, that's how many pages that you need to complete in your essay. The other thing is, we still have a hundred and some students that need to complete their senior interview. Those are already taking place through Spark Hire. And they've been working out wonderfully. And those can be done via a student phone. So they get the questions, they video it, and then they send it to a teacher. We will not be grading those. Again, giving the benefit to the student because this is different than they had planned, but they will receive feedback. And they will be granted credit that they did it. So, does that um answer questions for the seniors, for the service hours, and the interview?
Yes, Jake.
So, the question I had is why we're being asked to only approve the change in credits? And the initial response I got was, oh, that's, that what, it's not in our policy, it's in administrative guidelines. But the answer was, it's in the handbook. But there's a lot of things in the handbook beyond this year's senior class. Um, or is the motion doesn't apply to this year's senior class? It's only for the future grade.
That's correct, because the governor has spoken for this year's senior class.
Okay, so that's the clarification that
Yes.
We're only taking action for this year's ninth, 10th, and 11th graders to waive the two credits. At a level above what we can do is already spoken. Instead, so we as a board don't need to act for this year's senior.
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
And I do want to point out that for some students in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade currently, they will have 30 uh credit. It really depends upon what classes they choose. That's why I'm asking for a max up to a reduction of two credit, because it really depends upon what, what classes the students want to take. That way, the counselors will have flexibility in ensuring that students get um the schedule and they can stay on the path that they want. Here's another example of a local requirement in which we are going to be flexible on. An example would be, we require uh our students to take earth science. Uh, particularly in the 12th grade. That's a local requirement, um that is not a state requirement. For these three classes coming up, ninth, 10th, and 11th. We are going to be flexible on that requirement, because again, right, we're taking out a quarter. Um, if a student wants to double up on math or wants to double up on ELA or wants to double up on something else. Um, that will allow them the flexibility in being able to do that. Again, for these three classes coming up, being a little bit more flexible on our local requirements. So students can really continue pursuing um the path that they wanted. We do have some students that come in right at the ninth grade and plan out their schedule and they're, they're on a particular path because they know what they want to do. Well, with taking essentially a quarter out, that could really throw some students off, and we don't want to do that. So, again, I want to be able to provide counselors the flexibility they need to work in the best interest of students. And if a student is on a math track and they want to come, you know, get to a certain point, by the time they graduate, they would be able to do that. This earth science local uh requirement would not hold them up. Hey?
Uh, before you go on, just one thing I uh that needs to be really clear. It kind of ties in with Jake's question, is that whatever the executive order is from the governor, that really supersedes any board policy. So there have been some things like that particular one um that, you know, should we change policy or whatever? Uh, and we don't need to do that. So I just wanted to clarify that. Whatever her orders are, supersede the board policy and guidelines for sure. Okay, Heidi?
So that gives, that gives some highlights of the um high school plan again. Um, we, this will all be, this will all be coming out. Um, there is a high school staff meeting tomorrow. Um, where this will be shared with staff, and then communication uh will be going out to families um next week. Um, it will be, we are planning a communication for seniors earlier. Because, Burgett, as you said, I realize there's a lot of anxiety um regarding seniors. Because, you know, um, one, right with the whole situation and their year has really been um rearranged, so to speak. Um, but they're wondering what's, what's happening as well. And so that communication will be coming out by the end of this week specifically for seniors. And then next week uh will be coming out for our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. The plan that will then start to take place on April 20th. Where students are able to um continue on with the curriculum. And again, they will have the option of choosing a grade or a pass fail. Um, in that sense, so, um.
Before we, uh, I I'm sorry, go ahead, Heidi. I was gonna say, before we move to the bond uh update. I, I wanted to see if the board had any questions for you. We covered a lot of material here. Um, Dana?
All right, thank you. Let me unmute myself. Thank you, Heidi. I know that this has been a real labor going on here. Um, and I appreciate everything you and the staff are doing, because it's really initiation by fire. Um, a couple of questions I have are, um, in you, April 20th, you're gonna roll out a new plan. Will that be something um that's more mandatory than the plan is now, where the teachers will be grading things? I'm not talking about the high school level. I'm talking more of the elementary and the middle school level. Um, or is it still going to be kind of like it was approached this week where you're optional if you want to do this? Here are some resources. We'd like you to do it. But we understand, you know, if you're not going to, we're not going to put that pressure on you. Do you know how it's gonna look when the new, the next level comes out on April 20th?
Yeah, at this particular point in time, there is no intention to assign grades. Um, there will be feedback given on anything that is submitted. I will tell you that participation um will be monitored. Uh, and students, as they complete assignments, that will be recorded. So it's eh um, it's not, um. It's a little bit different. I, I will say that, you know, it's, it's not necessarily something that um we can't say that it is required. Um, again, nothing can be um punitive to a student per the executive order. However, it is strongly encouraged and recommended. And a lot of this, I have been asked that, you know, can you just come out and say, you know, it's, it's required? Well, at the high school level, that's a little bit easier, right? Because grades matter. You know, i- it's much different at the high school level. Middle school and elementary is a little bit different. Um, to be quite frank, that comes down to a parenting um issue. Where the expectation, I think, has to be at home that um some of these activities will be completed. And I will tell you that teachers are recording who participates, who doesn't, and how much participation um that students are doing. So, you know.
Okay, so that's different. The other question is, you said something about the curriculum mapping. Um, so is this something that is done at a local level? Or are you expecting something from the state to come down and then change the curriculum for um what, like next year, what second grade's gonna look like, or next year, what, you know, that kind of thing?
No, this is totally a local level. Uh, this is something that we implement. So for instance, you want to take second grade as an example. We will be reviewing all of our curriculum maps to ensure that this situation is taken into consideration at each grade level, at every level. So for second grade, we'll be looking at all the content areas, all of our curriculum maps. What were they supposed to cover in second grade? In first grade, did they not get that, right, during this period of time? Or do we need to review a part that we feel that we didn't get to? That's what I mean by reviewing curriculum maps, so that we are sure that we are not creating our own gaps for children ourselves.
Right. And then, thank you for all that. That's my questions. My um one comment is, I'm happy to see that you're working with the counselors and um the FSCs and all the emotional stuff. Um, and I encourage there to be a really good plan in place for when kids come to school. Because my heart is worried right now. For a lot of kids, schools are safe place. And now that they're going for an extended period of time. And so I do think that there is going to be a really big, I know you know this, but there, there's gonna be a really big need when we come back. So I appreciate you right now getting a head start on that and are we looking at? So, all right, I'm going to unmute. Thank you, Heidi.
No, and, and that is huge. That's the other thing I want to point out to the community, is that, you know, we are really trying to be inclusive and ensure that our plan, not only for, certainly focuses on the academics. I mean, that's the reason why we're here, right? But to also ensure that we are taking care of the whole child. And that is what, eh, that is the philosophy of Lake Orion, that we ensure that we're taking care of the whole child. And that's why you'll see on our resources that we've included mindfulness. That we've included these counseling services. Um, that it's a whole package, um, and it's not just focus, focusing on strictly, you know, the academics and what happens in the classroom. It, there's much more to a child and adolescent than the academics. And we really need to make sure that we're taking that all into consideration. Because as the staff knows, and we say here in Lake Orion, unless a student feels safe and has their basic and emotional needs met, doesn't matter what activities, academics we provide, they're not going to um get them unless the basic needs are met. So we really have to take a step back and make sure that all of those are included in our plan to the greatest extent possible, working remotely.
All right, other questions from the board? Yes, Burgett?
Not so much a question as it is a comment. Um, as you all know, we're a stellar uh school district. And um the minimum, uh, this is just for a frame of reference for the credit for um graduation requirements. The minimum state requirement for graduation is 18.
18, yes.
But we are, even with approving a reduction, we're still so far ahead with what we provide for students.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Just to add to that, we also have to remember that everybody in the world is going through this. So, it's not like Rochester's gonna get ahead of us. Well, Rochester might be a bad example, but Oxford's not gonna get ahead of us or our kids, because everyone's in it together.
The other thing that I will add is that, um, there's so many pieces to this. Like I said, I'm, I'm trying to remember all these parts and pieces, and certainly it will be, it will come out in, in the uh communication. But, you know, Scott, that made me um remember something. For instance, on our student transcript. We do know that colleges, right, will need to look at this differently because of this situation. But we're even thinking about our transcript. So when I say that we're offering students of choice between grades and pass fail, colleges don't like pass fail generally. We are ensuring that if a student chooses pass fail due to this situation, it will be noted on their transcript that the pass fail was due to COVID-19. The student did not choose the pass fail because of a different situation. That this was what was right for them at that time. Maybe their family's sick, maybe they have to work, maybe they themselves were sick. So, we're even thinking about those things going ahead. That, again, would ensure that this is not going to um be a disadvantage to our student. So, it will be noted on the transcript that it is specifically due to this reason.
Okay, other questions?
I do have one thing that I, um, I'm sorry, Jim, that I wanted to point out as well. That I have received quite a few uh questions um specifically regarding, um, will there ever be as part of a plan, a specific time or a schedule that students will be given when they are in class or have to log on um to um be in class um online, remote?
But that, that was, that kind of dovetails into the question I was going to ask, and maybe you can answer it all at once. Uh, I was curious about the mechanics of the teacher engagement. Uh, how does that happen? How does the communication take place? And in particular, the high, at the high school level, where we're really zeroing in on specific content and, and, and really measuring, even though there's not gonna be a grade type.
That will be happening, and it ha- has been happening to a certain extent regarding um email and Moodle. Um, now, teachers may, now that we know that we're going to be out for the remainder of the year. We will have teachers that will use um this Microsoft Teams. Um, that will, you know, have some video conferencing. They may be taped like their instruction so that students uh can play back. Um, and so there will be different ways specifically at the high school that teachers are interacting with their students. But the question has been asked, is, is, will all of the high school students be put on a particular schedule? Where they have to log on at a particular time um across the um, across the district, you know, at the high school? And the answer to that is, is no. There, I know that there have been a lot of parent concerns regarding that. That they um really were concerned that they may not be able to um handle that within their own homes regarding a specific time, because they're sharing devices. Um, students are having to watch uh younger siblings. Some students are working. And so I do know that I have had many parents reach out that that would really be something that would be difficult for parents to manage. And so, we do not plan on doing that. Um, if a high school teacher um plans to use Microsoft Teams and wants to hold um an online class remotely, that may happen. But if a student cannot participate, it will not be held against that student. And um, you know, there may be um lessons that are recorded that the student can go back at any time that fits their schedule within the day and review the lesson. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
One of the terms that we want to make sure is clear. The term is not punitive, it's penalize. So kids will not be penalized in those instances that Heidi mentioned. And that's pretty clear in the governor's order.
The other thing that I want to, yes, the other thing that I want to point out in the governor's order, it states very clearly. That the plan that we are submitting cannot be a hundred percent online.
Right. So there has to be paper packet. The other thing is that many of the things that I'm real pleased about are local decisions. So the governor has said that that's a local decision. The issue of of pass fail grading and so forth are decisions that we can make locally. So there is some local control in the requirement.
The other thing Marion had mentioned regarding the. Had mentioned just paper packets. That's been another question that I have been asked. Right now, due to the shelter in place or stay at home order by the governor. We are not doing that at this point in time. However, once that is lifted. We will be working with families if they do prefer some of these activities be paper. We'll be working to try to get that to families.
May I ask one other question? I, the the other question was related to what we started at the beginning of this week. And is there going to be any way to? Have some type of feedback loop or evaluation tool to see? For future reference, because we don't know what the future is going to bring. What what things worked well and what things we may want to refashion to work better?
Do you mean, do you mean for community?
Yes.
At some point, yes. Right now, I'm going to be honest, probably not. In the immediate future, because honestly, developing these plans to make sure that are meeting the executive order.
I understand completely.
Just too much, but for sure, and we're keeping notes on ourselves.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
As to, you know, if God forbid, we ever find ourselves in this position again. You know, what would we be sure that we had in place? But for sure, we will be at some point in time, absolutely what worked best for families, what didn't work. So that again, once we get beyond this. The idea would be that, as I said, God forbid this happen again, we would have a plan ready to go, a playbook.
Great. Any other questions?
Go ahead, Jim.
We are at the ninety minute mark. We have a few things to consider yet. How would people feel about taking a four and a half minute break?
And I will, I will, I don't know, I was going to say I was going to close everybody's video, but then it becomes really difficult.
Maybe we could just mute?
Yeah.
And we'll, so it's three twenty eight. We will resume maneuvers at, how is three thirty three?
You can stop your own video, I believe, but if I do it, it becomes more cumbersome.
Okay.
So I'd recommend you stop your video.
We'll be back.
Can you hear me? Nad, okay. Want to make sure the sound's working.
But people change positions on the screen, so it's sort of likely changed.
I keep looking. Heidi is in Bergit's spot. There's Steve. All board members are present and accounted for, Mr. Weedman. Just Mark.
Okay. All right, we're back. Great job, everybody. We're moving on. All right, back to Heidi. And did that complete what you wanted to talk about on on that item?
Yes, again, it's it's the highlights. There's a whole nother plan for middle school and elementary. I just asked that, you know, community, be patient. We're trying to think of every possible thing. And make sure that we take care of it again to benefit students.
Great. All right, thank you. So let's move on to the bond design teams report.
Yes, we did have a bond team meetings today. And we met with Paint Creek. And they, we worked on really just revising the layout of the front office. And so we're progressing with their design work. And then stadium, working on the placement of their STEM room, their main office. And a little bit of the site planning. So again, these two are in the earlier stages of their design work. But we are continuing to meet and make progress on those plans. And then our next meeting is scheduled for April twenty second. I will point out that, as you know, construction has halted. For the time being, we are hoping that soon we will be able to start up again. Right now, the impact really is our early childhood center and Weber. On both of these projects, we are about a month behind. So, you know, just wanted to make you aware of that. We're not really, the construction is not able to carry on at this point. But once we will be able to resume, hopefully, we will try to make up time. So that's where we're at at this point.
I have a question related to the early childhood center. The delay on that, would that present a significant issue in terms of consideration of the? Any discussion around a balanced calendar?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, we were talking about the issue of construction and how it relates to being an obstacle to consideration of a balanced calendar.
For, certainly for other buildings, not necessarily for early childhood. Because that's a brand new build.
Right, and and the reason I'm asking is because where we may be able to do a workaround, that's more significant. At other buildings, that's a more significant project, and I wondered if that was going to present a problem.
I don't, no, I don't foresee that at this point in time. The only thing that I would alert, and honestly, we kind of questioned this in the beginning. Is if we are pushed too much further back on the early childhood. The question would then become, are we going to be ready to open in fall of twenty twenty one? But again, for early childhood, you know, I don't feel that just, we we have some flexibility. Because obviously, we already have them in a building. It's, it's really Carpenter, Orion Oaks and Weber. That really we need to get working on. If you've driven by Orion Oaks, you'll see the fronts basically torn off.
Right.
So we are still moving forward, though. I do want you to know in the planning that when we are able to get back in, I've been working with Wes on making sure that we have boxes. For instance, Carpenter, every teacher will have to pack everything in their rooms and it will have to be moved. Because they're getting all new flooring. And so, you know, working so that when we are able to get back in, we're ready to go. And we have all of the materials needed.
Right, if there were some way for this, and I don't know whether you've even had this conversation. But if there were some way to. Lift the prohibition. Of those crews to get in and work. And they were to put a full court press on things from the standpoint that we won't have students in the building. Is there any way to make up time on that? Have they talked about that at all?
We have not talked about that, but I think that we would have to know that pretty quickly. Like right now, the the shelter in places until the end of April, let's say it was lifted, we probably need a couple of weeks. To get our teachers in there and get packed up. I do see what you're saying in that, you know, it would provide some extra time where, right, we weren't really. Construction wasn't going to be started in the buildings until June.
Right.
Fourteenth or whatever.
There'll be a lot of people looking to get back to work too. So you, you could potentially put a, you know, all out effort into it. That would possibly enable us to reconsider that calendar issue.
I can bring that up at the next project management. I fear that it's just right, that we would need to know that in a timely fashion.
Sure.
Still have time, but not knowing exactly what the governor will do too, so that we could provide ample notice to our families. But I will certainly bring that up on at project management at our next meeting to just get, you know, get the thinking behind that. If the opportunity would be there.
Yes, Jen?
I would just add too, from the perspective, we may be ready to move quickly, you know, relatively quickly as soon as we're allowed to. The bigger, the bigger concern is all of the feeding in vendors and production lines and lead times. That's all going to be messed up across the board, so. Just a little bit of background to, not just us, that's going to be prepared, got to be all the vendors involved and so.
Okay.
Just by way of example, today it was mentioned during our meeting, Tran, which is AC, heating and cooling. They've cut their production down to only doing necessity items. So there's going to be a startup across this country.
Got it.
Of all industries. So we may use some delays in parts and and things of that nature. That was mentioned today during our project meeting.
Okay, all right, that makes complete sense. All right, Heidi, anything else on the bond?
I think that's it. We are still continuing to keep the website updated, so you'll see an update today if Mark hasn't already got it done.
All right, great, thank you. Yes, Marion.
Please note my clapped hands to Heidi's reports, plural. Good job, Heidi. I just want to say that Heidi and Carrie and our administrators and staff are working tires tirelessly. As you can see by her reports today, so thank you, thank you.
Lots and lots of work there by lots of people. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to the curriculum committee report. Is there anything to report today?
We were set to meet in March, but due to the magnitude of the work that Heidi and her team did. We postponed that meeting or actually probably, it probably is not going to happen because our next meeting is scheduled for Friday morning, April the seventeenth.
All right, thank you very much. Lamp of learning report. Need a report today?
We do have a bit of a report, I will say. We've had a bit of a concern over our funding. You can probably jump in and perhaps even stat, but we haven't had an official meeting. But with everything that's going on, we're being impacted with our sponsorship. And we're, we're a little concerned about the funding of our scholarships that will be able to survive for our seniors. Trying to get a little bit creative. And I think, John, you just got word on some good news for us.
Yeah, a couple of things. Rotary is committing to their thousand donation and then. In terms of. A parking deal we've got in process with the with the village of Lake Orion. They're going to be, we'll be signing a little lease with them roughly twenty five hundred dollars a year for. Their, their goal is to use a couple of our parking lots for after five o'clock type entertainment parking for the village. So that kind of funding can be, is going to be directed into the lamp of learning. But in between that being finalized, because everything's up in the air with COVID life. We'll probably end up pre. we'll probably end up pre-funding a piece of the lamp of learning and then taking that piece and back.
So the committee will come back with uh recommendations after we get a better lay of the land here. Would that be fair?
That would be a fair statement to make.
Okay.
Cause, cause realistically, Jim, yesterday at ten AM, things looked very grim. And they kept getting better as the day went on, and then today they got even better. So we had quite a different report uh planned, but we're just gonna hold off on that and hope things keep on getting good.
Sounds good. That's great. All right, yeah.
Fourth thing before we're done, and I want Julie to be able to jump in on this. She has had to recreate the methodology in which students are gonna apply and how we distribute that. So she's communicating that as necessary with the high school and with the seniors for whom that will impact.
Great. All right, thank you very much. All right, on to human resources. Rick, you have plenty to share with us.
Um, yeah, and a vast majority of what I was going to share, I I spoke about earlier um in regards to the executive order. One additional piece on the executive order, the um, the terminology of collaboration is used in there um on a number of occasions. And I just want the board to be assured that we continue to collaborate with our union leadership and our our staffing. Um, I have uh regular contact with each of the local union presidents um in in making sure that we're all on the same page. And uh, I would really commend them and 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 thank them for all of their help and understanding and willingness to uh work through this with us as well. So know that we are, we're honoring uh our end of the executive order in that regard as well.
Great. All right, thank you. I suspect the superintendent evaluation committee did not meet.
No, and by way of reference, I did mention this earlier, that the uh the suspension of the evaluation across the state, that does also include superintendents.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, superintendent search, um, wanted to just open that up for a conversation briefly today. Um, just to update you, I have had a conversation with John Silvery. And um, he uh has shared with me that the majority of the searches they were engaged with have been suspended like ours has. And um, uh, but I wanted to hear from board members. If you recall, the process we went through, it was fairly detailed uh uh process to arrive at a conclusion and how we wanted to conduct our search and um, wanted to hear from uh board members about your thoughts about any adjustments, alterations. Uh, remembering that the theme that we had discussed previously was uh, community engagement was a a key uh element in this and uh, under our current circumstances, we're a bit challenged, but it's not to say that we can't move forward. So uh, I just wanted to open it up and see if anybody had any comments that they wanted to share. Steve? But you're muted, Steve.
Uh, first of all, I'd send uh my, thank you, my son Michael, he just left and I figured that out on my own. I thank you, Mr. Weeman. My suggestion and full disclosure, I spoke to Jim very briefly. Uh, we have a professional, his name is John. And if we can reach out to him, which I think Mr. Weedman will in the near future, just to get us feedback in June. Hopefully, our governor is indicating that by June, we're gonna have some progress to get back to work for um a lot of different people that we're all eager to. If somehow you can address to the rest of the board what your intentions are, Jim, as to how you'll be contacting Johnny, look at his supervision, sir, correct?
Uh, Burgett?
Yeah, I was on the same kind of lines. I was gonna suggest that since we have a contract with MLI and John Silvery is our chosen expert in the field. I wondered if it wouldn't be prudent for us to invite him to a meeting, maybe even our next meeting if possible, and have have him give us guidance as to where we are and what our um, what our options are moving forward if if the board is willing to change that.
I think, I think uh both you make a good point. Any others? Nate?
I totally totally agree with all of it. I was looking at the timeline that John sent up uh initially. And we were, we were getting really close to the end of the period by which we'd be accepting applicants. So we had a a pretty good pool or a pretty good timeframe of which the the window was open. So my assumption is, is that John has a pool of candidates already. Um, I think when we asked him for his recommendation, a couple of key pointed questions from me would be, do we feel like we did not get an adequate recruiting window uh in the time that we had? So if we go back to his plan, our steps would be reopen the posting, right? We'd have to set a new close date at whatever time, whenever we restart.
You you mean, given the dynamic of what we've been going through?
Yeah, and we were, what, we were less than two weeks away from closing the posting anyway. So I think when he comes back with a plan, a couple of the key questions for us would be, um, did we, did we get candidates? And are they still viable candidates? Are they still interesting? Um, whenever we restart, what do we feel like the recruiting window needs to be? Do we think we have enough uh enough there already or not? And then, um, I I I think it's also good to um to push uh maybe him and us a little bit in some norms. If we look at the schedule with the first rounds uh of interviews and then the second round, the process that he described, uh especially for the first round interviews was where we would each take turns asking que- it was very structured, right? Um, and there is a case to be made that we could do the first round interviews even in this type of format. Or at least we could evaluate that as an option. I think doing the final interviews, that dynamic changes a little where you you might not want to do that totally virtually. I think uh me personally, I think you could do that successfully. Um, but I don't know that we need to cover that ground. Um, when we asked John for his opinion, the the two main things for me would be the candidate pool. And is he seeing anybody do first round interviews remote? Because that would allow to really shortcut the timeframe, right, and and not just be dead in the water.
Sure, that's a good point.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you. Jake?
Yeah, so my comment sort of follows on, I think, to what Nate said, that we as a board need to consider our comfort level using this type of technology. Because when when he mentioned that, I would say I would be comfortable as well being able to do first round interviews using this technology. So I think beyond asking John what he thinks, we also have to consider what we as a board would be comfortable doing.
Okay, that's a good point. Dana?
Um, yes, I'm in agreement. When you um, we first got the news back, I don't remember, March thirteenth or something around there. And we said we're gonna put a halt to this. We also thought that was gonna end in a couple of weeks. And so now a lot of the timeframe and our landscape is changing, and it's a little bit different. So if we could have a consultation with John again and kind of revisit where we're at, where we're headed. Because before, if it was only a two week lag, well, that's no big deal. But now we're looking at two months. So I would like to kind of see what that would look like and maybe reframe the um, the calendar or whatever, the schedule a little bit more.
Okay, good.
I I agree with those three. I I would also go one step further to maybe see if he had something available even as early as next week, rather than waiting two whole weeks to start that piece. Um, you know, because we're we're really trying to glean information from the expert, right? So um, he's, he's our paid um guy. So I think that we should, you know, if if he's available next week and something that we could get on, um, you know, we could keep the ball rolling.
Well, let let me uh contact him, see what he's got going, how he's uh managing his business these days. And uh, worst case, we'll shoot to get him on the docket for the next board meeting. Uh, if we can't find a suitable alternative that's sooner. Is that fair enough for everybody? Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Yes, sir.
Yep, yeah, I think so. I was just looking at the calendar and we still have the time block that we had planned for next week anyway. So if he still has that time blocked, it could be a shortened amount of time for us in one of those. I think we have what, four days? Of four evenings blocked in there.
Right, right, Nate. We'll we'll see what he's got available. Absolutely. And then we'll get back with the entire board. Uh, any other comments uh in this regard at the moment?
No, sir.
Everybody good? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to finance. John, you've got some things to share, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna um, just a quick loop back. Marion had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, donated items, so just to touch on that real quick before I forget about it. On the district, we pulled together six cases of foamy hand sanitizer pumps, twelve count boxes and thirty-three bottles of Clorox wipes, eleven and a half cases of gloves and a partial box of masks that we ended up donating to Representative Slotkin and her group. I believe they went to a session written in hospital. So that was uh, that was one good thing. The in terms of an overview of um analysis of where I think we're at in terms of our our general fund and total district finances. Um, from a um, I don't want to claim there's been a real in-depth, multi-day detailed review beyond um some key categories I've been looking at, but in terms of where we're at with our uh general fund world, I'm anticipating a an estimated revenue reduction of about seven hundred thousand dollars, predominantly in um a couple of categories. Local revenue sources like theater rental, that kind of, that kind of thing. And then some funding that we get through the county tied to Medicaid funding. Um, that's probably about a hundred eighty, two hundred thousand dollars that's out there on that we probably will not get this year. That's on a refund basis based upon work done. That has a lag time and timing issue to it, so it may not be that bad. But I'm expecting to not get what we expected budget wise. So from a revenue, general fund revenue budget, roughly seven hundred thousand. On the expenditure side, a from a savings, because we were not executing um, several, you know, lots of supply budgets, lots of um um substitute budgets, those kinds of things, roughly three hundred fifty thousand. And things not being spent, that's a net dollar. There were some things that in looking at, what I was was looking at where we're, you know, in the final amendment process, we'll tick up some expenses and then multiple others will come down. But when I say the three fifty number, it's it's a net number. But typically, things are dragging in our utilities, um, fuel, bus fuel, custodial, our DMBIR contracts. Um, I expect the last few months to be heavily reduced in terms of cost. Their staffing, um, I believe last check with Wes uh the yesterday. Uh, maybe it was Monday, the days are starting to blend together. We roughly have a little bit, uh roughly nineteen personnel left, and that's probably going to be trickling down from there. Lots are going on for the unemployment, particularly with the federal add-on. In many cases, they're better off financially from the uh taking a furlong, going on unemployment. So also uh our substitute supplies and and things like that feed into that three fifty number. So from our current amendment one operating surplus of a little over twenty-two thousand, if I had to call a number, we'd be in the neighborhood of about three hundred twenty-five thousand operating deficit this year. But I would put that in the context of a range, it could be a hundred thousand dollar deficit or it could be a five hundred thousand dollar spending. Um, a couple of big items like the DMBIR piece and a couple of other items that have uh that will drive it one way or another. This does not take into account any state proration. So if the state does not prorate, and I've heard, I've heard arguments on both sides of it, if the state does not prorate, um, I do not think it's devastating to the general fund. It's going to set us back in terms of building up a fund balance and a timeline. But if there's a state proration, it's a whole new ballgame. So if they're gonna do a proration, it's not gonna be for two hundred thousand dollars a district. It's gonna be in my mind on the scale of what we saw back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. It'll be, it'll be a large proration. Um, the May revenue conference, estimating conference will probably set, if they even wait till May, that's the best regularly scheduled estimating conference. If they move it up, they might try to move it up, but I'm gonna guess if it's um extremely bad, it will set them off in a knee jerk reaction. And keep in mind, when we get our stated funding, we get our last two payments in July and August, then first two months of our fiscal year. So we could be seeing the actual cash flow, and I actually expect if they do a proration, I do expect to see the cash flow impacts in July and August. So with that context, uh, I've we've already started uh working with PNC in terms of uh trying to stay or establishing a line of credits. And we're requesting a two million dollar line of credit that comes further on the agenda. And where we're in that process is, you know, to this, today's uh approval of the resolution moves to the next step of I go through a process to apply with Treasury like the last three, four years back when we did one. This, the one we're requesting now is a little bit bigger than than that one was. I'm I'm hoping not need, not to need it, but it's more of a case of uh better safe than sorry and have it in place in terms of the cash flow. Um, if it is a proration, I'm I'm not, I'm not overly worried about the one, what I perceive as one-time revenue losses and one-time expenditure budget savings. It's if they do the proration, because under the executive order, as you've heard, we're committed to paying everybody. We're committed to paying, you know, groups of people that have no existing um income funds now. So if it's a major proration, it'll be a major hit to our general fund. Um, so and then in in context to all this too, um with regard to childcare group and the embedded in the community service fund and the and the food service fund, we roughly burn on the food service side about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a month in terms of salary and wages before the food. We've got a five hundred thousand dollar fund balance in that fund, so I'm gonna, I'm guessing we've got maybe two months of life in that, but in that fund. So it becomes an open question of how do we pay those employees if there's no money to pay them, particularly in the food service world? There's a big yellow line, bold bright line between the general fund and the food service fund as set up by the MDE years back. The childcare group, um, the the fact that we account for it in a separate fund is really a district by district choice. Some have it embedded in their general fund, some treated as a standalone business. We've, we've treated it as a standalone business and always have here, but they are a self-funded, they're tuition-driven. Um, they also have a little over five hundred thousand dollar fund balance. They're, you're, they're using up about a hundred and fifty thousand in terms of uh wages and benefits a month as well, so they should make it to the end of year with some kind of fund balance left. Um, all that said, in the context of, we really don't know what the state's gonna fund, is they may come back and say um, in terms of particularly the food service world, they, there is commitment of paying meals on a, on the, on the summer meal cost basis. But that, that will help, but that's, I I still think those two funds are gonna be in pretty rough shape by the time we reach the end of this, the scheduled school year, I should say. Um, but within the context of our finances, I'd be more than happy to field any questions, thoughts?
Jen, if I could, could I just make one comment as well?
Absolutely.
Um, I had mentioned earlier, but I want to bring it up again, that we're going to explore opportunities to leverage some of our work uh uh duties through the redeployment of those who will continue to be paid through the end of the year. So um, what that looks like at this point, we're not exactly sure. But especially in the areas of like the DMBIR issue, um, can we redeploy some of our employees? Once this uh stay-at-home uh or uh stay-at-home order is expired, could we redeploy some of those people into positions to do something different? That would help in uh in offsetting some of the losses that we're seeing with some of the DMBIR employees and some other areas. And we'll continue to need some additional support. Heidi had mentioned earlier the possibility of providing paper packets and such and such to uh families. Um, we could utilize some of our employees for delivery of materials. Um, so we've got a lot of opportunities that we can explore for redeployment.
Any more questions? Other questions for John? Do you anticipate uh through your professional group, do you anticipate any kind of projected number on a possible proration? Have there, has there been any discussion in your circles?
Not a possible number. It's more of a debate of will there be one or won't there be one? Now, remember this, they've got this rainy day fund.
Right.
That, do you have the argument, which is the one I agree with, of course, that we're not gonna find any more rainy every day than what we've got going on now.
Right.
So ideally, they hold this year harmless with that, which raises a secondary issue of what's next year gonna look like, so.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna just assume going into next year, um, the the funding, your people funding that we were planning on is going to be uh materially reduced.
Okay. Uh, Burgett, you had a question?
I do, thank you. Um, John, of the-
I do, thank you. Um, John, of the revenue that's essentially being, um, hindered, it includes food service, um, childcare, community enrichment, does that also include any funds we receive from the ISD?
Yeah, the Medicaid money I touched on a little earlier, that's, um, that money is really a reimbursement basis, so we don't have the, the itinerary staff doing the Medicaid-related work, and there's nothing to file for reimbursement on. The process in which it gets paid out has a lag time to it, so we may get by, this year we may be held harmless, but then a little impact is next year. But I'm, the ISD is, I know is aware of the, very aware of the process in terms of the way that distributes. It's likely they will just hold back knowing to keep it, keep all the, the, uh, not fun stuff going on in this year and then try to get back on normal next year. The P eighteen money though is pretty much already set, but levied.
And as far as it impacts pine trees, that's the things that they cover us on that for are still covered. The employees, for example, at pine tree.
At this point, um, it's, it's also a tuition-funded program, but it's tied to the P eighteen. And based on the orders, the, the, uh, the gray area assumption is that stays the same. Because it's all out of the, it's all under the P eighteen tax revenue, but it all falls under the operations of the Governor's executive order. They are a gray area though, so I wouldn't be shocked if something is, um, brought forward by the ISD. Matter of fact, I'm gonna, you know, based on our conversation now, I'm gonna corner them on it privately, so I don't, I don't wanna start a ball rolling that doesn't need to be. But I'll do some back-channeling and see if I can find out if there's any inclination like that. I can't imagine they would. They have a hard enough time getting people to open up centers. If they, if they cut the ties and really put a lot of people in, in a bad position, we're gonna have a much harder time maintaining those centers.
Yes, Marion.
Well, you know, and the other thing is that a lot of the decisions that have to do with P A eighteen, there is kind of a, an order of approval. And, um, I'm on, I'm the chair of the Special Ed Subcommittee of the County for the superintendents. And then John and I are on the P A Reference Committee, so those all have to go through the approval. And then finally, of course, their Board of Education, based on the decision that we make. So, uh, John can double-check and then we'll report back at another meeting, but I'm pretty confident.
However, that doesn't mean that that number can't be, uh, altered for the following year based on revenue changes, let's put it that way.
Yeah, that's, that's always potentials out there.
Yeah, and I guess one of the things I wanna say, maybe this isn't the appropriate time, but it, it seems to fit. That everything that we have shared today is based primarily on the latest executive order from the governor. But if you look on our website or on the Michigan.gov website, you will see how many executive orders are on there and how many have been either rescinded or changed. So, you know, I think everybody, I wanna make it really clear to everybody, what we're sharing with you today is what we know right now, but that doesn't mean it's not gonna change.
Stay tuned.
Yeah.
The only, the only constant thing is the fluidity of what's going on.
All right, Jen, bus leases.
Okay, so, um, actually, there's a February monthly report, you know, if you got a question, I, I was just gonna slip over it because it's kind of mute at this point. Are you comfortable with that?
Yep.
So the, the bus leases, as you know, we have a, our current bus lease, our current bus fleets made up of a portion of leased buses and we own a portion. So currently, the lease structure is coming due, um, the first round that we had, when we've been working with Hoax to our vendor in terms of restructuring going forward. So what's in the actual lease documents? There's two lease documents that are really amendments to existing leases. So we will be extending, um, two of the existing leases by one year, covering fifteen passenger buses, fifteen of the eighty-four passenger passages, buses, and six of our special needs buses. We will also be, um, executing three new multi-year leases, um, one covering ten, ten more eighty-fours, five more seventy-sevens, and then six more special needs on top of that. So when all that's in place, we'll, we're gonna have forty-two leased vehicles, twenty-three owned vehicles, totaling sixty-five. We currently have a fleet of sixty, so we'll be looking at the, um, group of the twenty-three that we own, identifying three to five of them and selling them off, as we have, have done in the last, uh, two, three years. So we will end up in a, with a sixty or sixty-one bus fleet again. Thirteen of the owned, by the way, are, were ones bought just this past year with bond proceeds, so those are almost brand-new. And then, uh, ten older ones, and some of those ten are quite old, but those will be the ones that'll be looked at and sold off.
What is the length of the new lease, Jen?
They should be, I need to double-check, uh, and bring a printed copy with me of them, but they should be three-year leases for the new ones. And then, um, the goal here is to get some of these leases staggered.
Right, so we have a rotation.
Yeah, so we're not flipping forty buses and, and every, every three-year flip, so it's probably gonna gear into, you know, twenty-twenty or fifteen, fifteen, fifteen kind of format as we.
Right. Okay. Date?
Thanks, John. Can you remind me, um, what's the target, uh, ratio of owned to lease? Is this kinda, is this where we wanna be, or are we trying to shrink the own and own population and, and grow the le, the leased version of it?
Um, our, our original target was to get to an entirely leased fleet that's staggering in, in renewal rates, the renewal times on the underlying leases. That was the original target, and then we successfully passed the bond. So that kind of became a, it becomes more using bonding funding to do it, more advantageous to have a mix. The advantage of having a leased, remember is that there, you're not dealing with heavy-duty, um, me, uh, mechanical work or metalworking on it. Some of our buses prior, prior to going lease, um, our mechanics were doing more metalwork than they were doing mechanic work because of the age and the rust and all that stuff. So, um, because we do have the thirteen new ones that came in, you know, by the basis of the bond, we'll probably end up with fifteen owned and then the balanced leased, so depending upon what our student population and and, uh, student busing population ends up being, that'll fluctuate up and down.
Thank you.
Other questions on, uh, the bus leases? Okay.
So, also in the packet is the, the resolution on the line of credit I touched on a little earlier, um, it's same, same process from three years back. It authorizes us to move forward to work with, uh, PNC Bank once we get formal approval from the Treasury, and the Treasury's committed to a twenty-day turnaround. Well, that, let me, let me caveat that, they were committed to a typical twenty-day turnaround prior to the COVID world. Hopefully, it's still twenty days, but the goal is to get a line of credit in place that's effective covering all of next fiscal year. Hopefully, we don't need it. I suspect if we do need it, it's gonna occur in the first two months in summer from a proration or as we get into the October, December timeframe with a proration impacting next year's school funding.
How, how long is that, uh, line of credit good?
It said technically three hundred and seventy-two days.
Okay. All right, any questions on credit?
What's the significance of three hundred and seventy-two days? It's just a weird number.
That is classic legislature. Now, there, there is a little logic to it, because you, you needed something greater than the calendar year. And then a lot of districts do, it's similar to state aid borrowing. A lot of districts would do the, either line of credit or the state aid borrowing, which is typically longer-term districts that have actual cash flow problems. It's so you can get through a new fiscal year reauthorized, and then like each year it kind of creeps four or five days forward into the year, because you get that six-day overlap. It's a legislative thing.
It's actually one year and one week.
Yeah.
Yep. All right.
On the bidding, we do have, we do have one bid, so we do have, uh, one bid, uh, put before the board. It is, uh, a project that is both bond and sinking fund. It is the, uh, HVAC systems for the district. Uh, just a quick little background, in the district, we've got, I believe, three different structural HVAC systems, one going, one pneumatic from many, many years ago. And then two newer versions of, of controls. The goal here being that within the next four or five-year time set, the district's operated on a state-of-the-art unified system. So it's going to also be funded both from sinking fund world and from bond world. So, and, and it will go on through all three series of bond. So it's a, it's a four-and-a-half million dollar project. It's going to be with us as long as the entire bond project is, mainly because as we get into different buildings down the road, that's gonna be, you know, working in, in the same construction timelines. From a cost point of view, it's a four, four million, two and eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollar contract with a request for contingency of allowances of one million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars for grant or love, five million, seven seventy-one, one thirty-nine commitment. I think, uh, before I forget it too long, in this bidding package, it's also tied to this bidding package in those numbers I just requested. There's a contract for, it's basically systems balancing and testing. You contract with, uh, an organization, so through the whole life of our construction projects here, we'll be using the same firm to do the testing and balancing of the new equipment, particularly the HVAC and some of the heavy roof equipment. That's also in that bidding package. And just to anticipate a question, um, we got four bids, I believe, on our, if I brought that back at home. Let me know if I'm making too much paper shuffling noise. In the bids itself, we believe, I believe we got four, or one, yeah, four bid responses for the HVAC systems. Only one addressed the entire bid language, hence the winner of the bid. That's why when you look at the back pages, we selected the vendor that actually has the highest price, but that's because they were the only one who fully complained, the bid response. The other three responded in partial pieces, hoping to get some kind of a conglomerated piece of an overall project. But the, uh, uh, selection process and the decision was to go with the known commodity with the single pricing. Any questions?
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Finance Committee Report? Jake?
There is no report, uh, but just to let John know, of course, we are ready to meet because obviously, when, as you get new revenue projections, there's gonna be interesting budget questions that we as a board are gonna have to face, because in the last meeting, we looked at a three-year projection that had an underlying increase of well over a hundred dollars per student. And if the new projections come in where we don't have that, obviously, we as a board are gonna be challenged along with administration to figure out how, what, what our priorities are for the upcoming school years, given the changes in funding.
All right, thank you, Jake. All right, Facility Liaison Report, Scott?
General Report at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir. And we'll move on to action items. May I have someone on the consent agenda? Make a motion.
I move that we approve the following consent agenda item. Approve payment of the March bill in the amount of seven million, seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and twelve cents. Approve minutes from the March ninth, twenty twenty, special meeting and closed session, and March eleventh, twenty twenty, regular meeting.
We have support.
Support.
All right, uh, Julie, can you do a roll call, please?
Sure, uh, Mr. Buckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos? Mr. Dracos?
United, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Ms. McQuiston? Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. All right, the motion has, uh, been approved. May I have a motion to approve the AP Microeconomics, Macroeconomics Instru, Instructional Resources?
I move to approve the new instructional resources requested for advanced placement, Microeconomics and Macroeconomics as presented.
Is there support for that?
I'll support.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? We've discussed that fully, I believe, so I think we're in good shape. Julie?
Mr. Buckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. All right, the motion is approved. All right, let's move on. Authorized bus lease renewals, may I have a motion for that?
The move that we authorize administration to execute the bus lease addendum and new leases for a total annual lease cost of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars as presented.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All right. We've fully discussed that, so Julie?
Mr. Buckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes.
McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes, thank you. All right, may I have a motion to adopt line of credit?
A move that we adopt a resolution approving the line of credit in an amount not to exceed the May payday for the fiscal year by first, twenty twenty, and ending on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one as presented.
All right, any support?
Support.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? We've discussed with John, Julie?
Mr. Buckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yeah.
Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. All right, that motion is approved. We have a motion to authorize a district-wide building control bid award.
Move that we authorize administration to execute contracts for the district-wide building controls and testing and balance projects in the amount of four million, two hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars, and also to allocate contingency and allowances of one million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a total amount of five million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? We've discussed that pretty fully. So Julie, please.
Mr. Buckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. Motion is approved. And finally, uh, may I have a motion to approve the graduation credit requirements?
A move that we approve reducing graduation requirements for the graduating classes of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three by a maximum of two credits where necessary to benefit individual students as recommended.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. And, uh, Heidi did a fabulous job of explaining that, so I don't think we have any further questions on that, so Julie, please.
Mr. Buckkey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston? Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. That motion is approved. Okay, so recap and next steps. Who wants to jump in here?
Well, uh, wow, fortunately, that, uh, Ian has, uh, recorded all of this. I think the next step is to continue on with what we're doing. Although, maybe this is part of my closing comment, too, I just received notice, uh, and I must have cursed myself, that Governor tomorrow is going to extend the stay-at-home, so.
Okay.
Be announcing it tomorrow.
What we have coming at us.
Yep.
I, I, I also have a next step, but I'll be contacting uh John Silvery and we'll look at dates next week and the following week. And I'll ask Julie, after I talk with, what dates he has available uh and times. Now, uh, while, while we're talking about this, does daytime uh still work for people? Or would it have to be at night?
Daytime's fine for me.
Daytime's fine for everybody?
I would prefer evenings.
Me too.
Because technically I'm supposed to be working.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll see what he's got available and we'll get it out to you and we'll determine what we can do to get him on the docket with the entire board. All right, Julie, you had your hand up?
I was just going to mention that as our recap.
Okay. Okay. All right. Final comments. Let's start with, we don't have the regular lineup here. So I'm just gonna go like this, Rick?
Uh, nothing further to add, other than thank you.
Okay. John?
Nothing further.
All right, Heidi?
Nothing further.
Marion?
No, I'm done, thank you.
All right.
Great job.
Uh, Steve?
Uh, happy Passover to whoever's observing, happy Easter, whoever is observing, and good health, tall. Thank you, Jim.
All right, thank you. Nate?
Huge appreciation and gratitude for all the amazing work. It's inspiring to see the way the teams are coming together for our kids. Love it, awesome, appreciate it.
Thank you. Jake?
Nothing further.
Okay, Dana?
Um, just a thank you to everyone for their hard work and continue, just to, you know, keep moving along. Thank you.
Great, Scott?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, Bergit?
I do have a couple things to say, I want to remind everyone that, oh, it's backwards, never mind, but.
No, it's not.
No, you showed up, so you guys, it, it's still um, March is child abuse prevention month from our Orion, Orion area youth assistance. Um, I don't know if the ten wheels are up at the administrative building or not, but um, just because we're inside doesn't mean that that is going on this month. Um, I also want to recognize a great loss in our community in the past, and we're also in the mouth. Um, what an incredible woman and educator she was, a mentor and an activist for students of all ages. And surely an amazing wife, mother, and grandmother. Dana, our thoughts and prayers are with your family in this time of great loss and sorrow. She surely leaves um Lake Orion with an incredible legacy, and she lives on in you and your family. Um, and for our district, I just want to say, we've all heard, when the going gets tough, the tough get going. And my goodness, in these past few weeks, we have witnessed our cabinet, administrators, and teacher leaders handle this crisis with finesse, grace, and sheer grit. The definition of a crisis includes a crucial crisis point or situation, especially a difficult or unstable situation involving impending change. And the key to getting through a crisis is leadership. And here in Lake Orion, our leadership has responded in a calm and decisive manner. As we move forward with education in this unprecedented time, I'm confident our leaders will continue to move us forward together for the good of all our dragons. So a huge thank you for our leadership team and teachers, and also a shout out to our parents and students. As I imagine changing your classroom connections and education to online unexpectedly has been a challenge, but we're all going to get through it and we're going to be stronger because of it. Um, shout out to everybody still going on with their work in our district, whether you're food service or D M B R or the um, the aforementioned leadership team. And kudos to all our students that are taking cards to benefit the people um that are our heroes on the front line. I know the robotics team has collected, um, also, like John mentioned, the district has um supported hospitals, the robotic students have been collecting the same type of, of um donations as um gloves, um, face masks and, and that kind of thing and donating them to the hospital. So a lot of good is coming out of such a difficult time, so stay strong, everyone.
Thank you, Bergit.
Thank you, Bergit. And uh, I know that share, uh, your thoughts are shared by the entire board on many of those things. And I'd like to just add my thanks to uh the leadership in the district and uh, and in particular, uh, the food service, uh, the things that have been happening to make sure that children have food. Uh, there's nothing more important than that. Um, the Herculean tasks that the uh Heidi's team has had to uh bring this uh educational experience to a different level and a different format for uh nearly eight thousand, eight thousand students uh has been nothing short of uh a monstrous task and it's been done very well. And we'll see the results of that as we get further into it. And, and finally, uh, thanks to Marion for her constant communication with, with the community and the board and uh keeping us uh on the edge of things uh as, as issues change, that it's, it's very important that we have an awareness of that as it goes along, and, and I think Marion's done a great job with that. And uh, on that note, I don't have a gavel, so we're done. Thank you, I appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hanging in there, and uh you did a beautiful job on this, I might add.
It was great.
Worked out well, and uh we will uh get good at this in the coming days.
Yeah.
All right.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, thanks, take care.